And if we could stand up and face the flag, we're going to pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin, I'd like to introduce two, or three new people. Two people on the school committee, Rachel Agrillo, she's there in the pink, and Maria Henley. Heny. Heeny. Heeny, okay. Welcome, we're so excited to have you. And Zoe Noonan is our newest student advisor, so welcome Zoe, we're really excited to have you. Is anyone here from the public that would wish to make a comment? Nope. Okay. Alrighty. Reports and presentations, chairperson's report. We have the 2025 Navigator Awards, and that is in your folder. Let me see here. And basically, they just, the correspondence was just an update on the day, the day on the hill, update. And if you have any questions on that, that's, like I said, in your folder, or I could get you a hard copy of that. And then, we have some special awards for some special students and teachers. They're the Navigator Awards, and Kendalyn is going to present those.
You're gonna help me, right?
Yes, and I'm going to help her.
Hey, good evening and welcome to our school committee meeting. The Bourne School Committee recognizes students whose exemplary achievement directly supports the Bourne School District's core values and vision of a graduate. These students go above and beyond to exhibit these characteristics and can be held as models for other BPS students district-wide. So we have a number of great students this evening. Our first one is JT Luth, who's a 12th grader.
He's a senior and they're having an event this evening.
I was just gonna say, so.
Yes.
So he was nominated by Anne Marie Strode. I'm gonna just do a quick little summary as far as when they were nominated. There was a nice light up as to why they felt that they were, they should be receiving the Navigator Award. So, Anne Marie Strode, a little summary here is JT Luth is a standout student who exemplifies leadership, integrity, and dedication to the school community. As a founding member of DECA, JT has consistently demonstrated initiative and leadership, helping to shape the organization within our school. JT's commitment to excellence extends beyond extracurricular involvement in the classroom. He consistently excels through his ability to produce high-quality work and his willingness to support and collaborate with his classmates. He not only strives for academic success himself, but also contributes to a positive and productive learning environment for others. JT Luth is a true leader, driven, compassionate, and unwavering in his pursuit of excellence. I believe that JT fully exemplifies the tenants of the Navigator Award. So congratulations to JT. Next, we have Quinn Moriarty, who's also a senior.
And at his event.
And at his event, also nominated by Anne Marie Strode. Quinn embodies what it means to be a Canalman, hardworking, engaged in the community, and grounded in strong character. He leads by example and consistently encourages those around him to be their best selves. As a dedicated member of our soccer and basketball teams, Quinn demonstrates what it truly means to be a teammate. Whether he's on the field or cheering from the sidelines, he is fully invested in supporting his peers. You'll often see him offering words of encouragement, celebrating other successes, and creating a positive embodiment. Quinn's character is defined by kindness, compassion, and a genuine desire to make a difference. He helps create the kind of school culture we all strive for, one that is inclusive, respectful, and caring. He exemplifies the values behind the BPS Navigator Award, demonstrating leadership, empathy, resilience, and a strong sense of community. I can say with confidence that Quinn has had a lasting positive impact on our school. Thank you, Quinn. Our next nomination is Cameron Doherty, who's a 4th grader, and that was, nomination was done by Ms. Tongue, 4th grade teacher. Cameron has been nominated for Bourne Navigator Award for consistently demonstrating what it means to be a dedicated and resilient learner. She gives 100% effort in everything she does and never gives up, even when faced with challenges. Cameron is an active participant in her learning, and she has shown incredible growth both academically and socially this year. Cameron is kind, respectful, and thoughtful. Her positive attitude and unwavering determination make her a true role model and a shining example of what it means to be a Bourne Navigator. Cameron? Do we have Cameron here? No, Cameron! Our next recipient is Michaela Noonan, an 11th grader here at BHS, nominated by Catherine Wheeler, who's a BHS math teacher and club advisor. She was nominated based upon a special project in regards to starting a new club, and this is what she had to say. Michaela has taken on creating and running the Jesus Club at Bourne High School. I admire her great courage in sharing her faith in a wonderfully mature and articulate way. She puts in the time to create activities for each meeting, including Bible studies and discussions. She facilitates each meeting and is incredibly respectful and loving to all students, especially those who have different points of view. Very important in this day and age. That's Michaela Noonan. Our next recipient is Adelina Vecchioni, also known as Addie. This is what Ms. Tongue has said about you when she nominated you. Addie is a shining example of what it means to be respectful, responsible, and engaged learner. She always gives her best effort and approaches each task with care and pride. Addie is a role model for her peers, an active participant in her learning, a supportive partner, and a collaborative team member. Her patience and willingness to help others make her a natural teacher among her classmates. Addie's quiet leadership, kindness, and dedication truly set her apart. Congratulations, Addie. Come on up. Our next recipient is Hayley Forre, another 4th grader, nominated by Ms. Costa, her 4th grade teacher. Hayley has demonstrated outstanding growth in reading and writing, a positive attitude towards learning, and consistently works hard at improving her skills. She's not afraid to take risks. Hayley is also an outstanding peer leader and kind towards all classmates, a true navigator of BPS. Our next recipient is Jake Rue, also a senior, nominated by Anne Marie Strode. Jake is a student who is incredibly respectful. He shows consistent respect to his teachers, peers, and every member of the school community. His strong moral compass is evident in his commitment to doing the right thing, even when no one is watching. Whether Jake's in the classroom, on the field, the court, or the ice, he gives everything he has. He bounces back from setbacks with determination and rises to every challenge. He brings a positive attitude to each class and truly represents what it means to be a Canalman, invested, hardworking, and kind. These qualities not only contribute to his own successes, but also help create a better school environment for everyone around him. Congratulations, Jake. Another 12th grader, Michael Denkert, nominated by Anne Marie Strode. Doing a lot of writing. Michael Denkert's character is without question his most defining quality. He is genuinely kind-hearted, and you can feel his warmth the moment he walks into a room. He is always ready to offer a helping hand to anyone in need. Michael's work as a peer mentor for the Special Olympics Unified Basketball and Track Teams is a perfect example of his commitment to inclusivity and compassion. In this role, he encourages and supports each athlete, forming meaningful connections and serving as an uplifting presence. Michael's dedication to making others feel valued extends beyond school. He also creates Easter baskets for local children in need, showing his willingness to go above and beyond for his community as well. In every way, Michael is an exceptional individual. His blend of character, academic dedication, and athletic ability make him not only a role model for his peers, but also an asset to his community. Congratulations. We got mom accepting as a word for him. Yes. Our next recipient is Ava Look, an 11th grader here at BHS. She's nominated by Anne Marie Strode. And Kim Ayanucci. Ava Look is a wonderful young lady with a quiet presence and an incredible amount of grit. When she wasn't selected for the volleyball squad this year, she was understandably upset, but she didn't give up. Instead, she persevered and turned the setback into an opportunity. Ava became the team manager and played an integral role in their successes, helping lead the team all the way to the state championship title. What makes Ava truly stand out is her kindness. She always greets others with a smile on her face and treats everyone with warmth and respect. Her positive attitude and ability to connect with those around her have earned her the respect of both peers and staff alike. Ava's determination and kindness truly make her a role model for other students within our school. Congratulations, Ava. Our next recipient is Caroline Smith, also an 11th grader here at BHS, nominated by Kim Koala, 3rd grade teacher. In 2016, Caroline and her family moved to Bourne when her father was transferred here from New York. Being a military kid, Caroline was already exposed to and aware of what it meant to be responsible and held accountable. Since middle school, Caroline has come back to my classroom to volunteer on Friday afternoons. She also helps out in other 3rd grade classes as well. While most kids are excited to go home on a Friday afternoon and be out of school, Caroline would come and read with the kids, help with math, run the classroom store, or just be there to support the kids in any way she could. Once she entered her high school years, Caroline sought and was given permission to join our 3rd grade students for their field day and make up her work for the day on her own time. Her academic responsibility has shown as she is consistently making the honor roll and is now vice president of Bourne High School's National Honor Society. She has also been a member of the Student Council throughout her time at the high school. In addition to being an honorable student and volunteer, she works at three different jobs. Caroline is one of those unsung star students of Bourne High School. She may not have the lead role in a show or the highlight moment in a sporting event, but she exhibits the day-to-day qualities that I hope all students will have in the future. Our next recipients are a group of students. These three students served on the District Strategic Planning Steering Committee this year. It's a mouthful. Those three, JT Luth, the 12th grader, who is not here with us tonight. We have Lola Lumley, who's the 9th grader, and Alexis Weston, 8th grader. These three students' voices were essential to shaping a vision for the future of Bourne Public Schools that truly reflects the needs and aspirations of our student body. Throughout the process, these students consistently demonstrated critical thinking and problem-solving, thoroughly analyzing data, and offering insightful contributions that elevated our conversations. They exhibited strong collaboration and teamwork, engaging respectfully with a diverse group of stakeholders, and building consensus around complex ideas. Their effective written and verbal communication ensured that the perspective of students were clearly and confidently represented. They approached every meeting with a strong sense of responsibility and accountability, and their commitment to civic service involvement was evident in their willingness to contribute to long-term district planning that will benefit generations of Canalmen to come. Their presence reminded us all of the power and importance of student leadership. We are proud of their dedication and grateful for the opportunity to learn alongside them. So Alexis, Lola, JT, congratulations. Our next nomination and award recipient is Lily Couch, 6th grader, nominated by Carrie Boyce-Claire. Lily was the assistant stage manager for the after-school spring play at BMS. She had never taken on this type of role before, and she was extremely successful. She demonstrated leadership in this new role, and it was such a joy to watch her confidence grow as she moved through the rehearsal process and into the final performances. Being an assistant stage manager is a difficult task. It requires quick and critical thinking, extreme organization, and an ability to effectively communicate with all members of the cast and crew of the production. Lily used all of these skills in her work and was successful in the role because of all of these, these things. Lily, come on up. Congratulations. Our next recipients are Claire Canfield and Alexis Weston, nominated by Carrie Boyce-Claire. She's the theater teacher at BMS. Claire Canfield and Alexis Weston were nominated for a Navigator Award this year because of all of their hard work and dedication to the theater program at BMS. Claire and Alexis have participated in all three Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Middle School Drama Festival plays, there's a mouthful, during their time at BMS. They have taken on a variety of roles throughout their years here, and they have both been a crucial part of the development of the program. Each play that these students have been involved in have come with their own set of challenges, from cast and crew dropping out, students being out sick during performances, technical elements failing, having to memorize a huge amount of lines and actions, and taking on roles that really push them out of their comfort zone. Alexis and Claire have overcome all of these hurdles and participated in three very successful plays. They have both demonstrated leadership by always leading with kindness, modeling good behavior at rehearsals and performances, and setting great examples for the younger students. They have both always been prepared for rehearsals and shows and have been able to balance the commitment of being in a play with all of the academics and other outside commitments. This year at festival, Alexis and Claire represented BMS by publicly giving a student recognition award to another school and receiving one for BMS. They represented BMS with poise, confidence, and in a way that we would all be very proud. Alexis.
There you go again. Congratulations.
Come on up, Claire. We have another group of students that are recipients this year, a group of 5th graders. We have Carly Schultz, Fiona Dwyer, Jackson Beck, and Alyssa Wild, all nominated from Dr. Smith. Carly, Fiona, Jackson, and Alyssa participated in the Grade 5 String Club every Monday afternoon from September through the entire school year. With enthusiasm and dedication, they worked together after school and continued to practice their songs at home to improve. Thanks to their collaboration, teamwork, responsibility, and accountability, it truly became the teacher's favorite project of the year. By the way, Dr. Smith, this was, that was his first time teaching string instruments. It's a good reminder that we are never too old to try something new, and often, it's in trying these new things that we discover our true passions. So Carly, Fiona, Jackson, Alyssa, congratulations. Jackson Beck.
There you go, Jackson. Congratulations. Great job. Okay. And then may I have your names, please?
Fiona.
Okay. And then you're Alyssa?
Carly.
Okay. There you go. Okay. Here. Congratulations. Great job. There you go. Congratulations. Great job.
We now have two 3rd graders that were nominated by Dr. Smith. We have Peyton Brew and Logan Taboe. Peyton and Logan stood out musically in Grade 3 at BIS this year. Both sang beautifully and demonstrated exceptional skill on the recorder. Not only did they learn and memorize every song, but they also improvised solos with ease and originality. Creativity represents the highest level of musical achievement, and Peyton and Logan exemplified this. It's clear that they will continue to thrive as creative individuals across many areas of learning in the years ahead. Peyton and Logan, congratulations. Our next recipient is also nominated by Dr. Smith. We have Luca Gomez-Bagdonas. Luca's intellectual curiosity and deep interest in learning have been remarkable. Luca plays the saxophone with beautiful tone quality and exceptional technique. He is always eager to improvise a solo or create a melody. In addition to saxophone, he plays clarinet and piano. He has an aptitude for learning instruments quickly. What is most impressive is Luca's extraordinary ear. He can hear something once, play it back with ease, and then transpose it into another key. From there, he goes even further, improvising and making the melody entirely his own. This rare gift goes far beyond simple recall and repetition. Luca is able to interact with ideas, transform them, and apply them in original and meaningful ways. This ability to reimagine and reshape information will serve Luca well, not only in music, but in solving complex problems across disciplines with creativity and insight. Luca, come on up. And our last student, Navigator Award, goes to Piper Vecchioni, 2nd grader at BES, nominated by Tara Stanton. Piper is an exceptional 2nd grade student who demonstrates a wide range of impressive academic and social skills. Some of her teachers say things such as, Piper is an exceptionally kind and respectful young student who consistently brightens the room with a warm smile. Always considerate of others, she sets a positive example through kindness, empathy, and a cheerful attitude toward both peers and teachers. One of her other teachers, Piper consistently demonstrates healthy habits by eagerly participating in school-wide wellness challenges like the Two Bike Club and Screen Free Week. She is a kind, responsible, and enthusiastic school community member who is a positive role model for younger students through her actions. As a member of the Bourne Dale Student Council, Piper brings enthusiasm and thoughtful ideas to the team. Piper is always willing to help both her teachers and her classmates, truly an example of showing compassion and leadership. Piper, come on up. So congratulations to all the students of 2025 Navigators. So now, we would like to recognize the staff members whose exemplary work supports student well-being and achievement, the core values of the district, and the direction of the district. These staff members go above and beyond to exhibit these characteristics and can be viewed as models for other staff members district-wide. Our first recipient is Ellen McLaughlin, Assistant Principal, nominated by Tori McMahon, School Adjustment Counselor. Our Assistant Principal exemplifies what it means to be a collaborative and compassionate leader. She consistently goes out of her way to build strong, respectful relationships with both students and staff, fostering a culture of teamwork and mutual support. Whether it's stepping into classrooms to support instruction, problem-solving alongside teachers, or taking time to truly listen to students, her presence is felt and appreciated. Ellen's dedication to student well-being is evident in everything she does. She takes time to know each student by name, celebrate their successes, and advocate tirelessly for those in need of extra support, emotionally, academically, behaviorally. Ellen's tireless commitment, positive spirit, and ability to bring people together make her truly an exemplary educator and leader. Ellen, congratulations. Our next recipient was nominated by two separate individuals. That would be Mr. Terry Donovan, history teacher up here at BHS, nominated by Anne Marie Strode and Stephanie Drew. Terry Donovan is the kind of person everyone counts on. He's loyal, thoughtful, and always there when you need him, whether you're a student or a colleague. He builds strong, meaningful relationships with students and pushes them to be their best, all while making them feel seen and supported. Terry believes in his students and provides a safe space for them. He is the trusted adult that we all hope and wish our children are lucky enough to have in their lives. Terry is also a trusted mentor and steady role model for all staff. He's supportive, genuine, and always looking out for others. He is truly a remarkable educator, colleague, and leader. Congratulations, Terry. Our next recipient is Kim Ayanucci, who's a guidance counselor here at BHS, nominated by Anne Marie Strode. Kim Ayanucci is one of those people who makes Bourne High School a better place every single day. She supports everyone, students and staff alike, with a calm, steady presence that keeps, that helps keep things running smoothly, even in tough situations. Her calm demeanor, combined with her professionalism, puts people at ease and makes her someone others naturally turn to. Kim is incredibly reliable and hardworking. You can always count on her to follow through, get things done right, and do it all with a positive attitude. Whether she's supporting a colleague, helping out with a program, or organizing behind the scenes, Kim gives it her all. Kim's contributions may not always be in the spotlight, but they are essential to the success of so much of what we do here at Bourne High School. Kim, congratulations. Our next recipient is Jess Abisla, who is a school nurse at BIS, nominated by Rebecca Esip, who is the school nurse leader. Jess has worked diligently to ensure that students and her care are treated with the highest level of nursing highest level of nursing care. Jess consistently ensures her students with medical needs are able to access after-school activities with nurseful support. She brings a lightness and welcoming tone to the health office. Her attention to detail and care for our BPS students and staff has been above and beyond. Jess, come on up. Congratulations. Our next recipient is Kristy Hawkes, a kindergarten teacher and mentor, was nominated by Rebecca Wilson. A colleague of hers is also a kindergarten teacher. I have consistently witnessed Kristy go above and beyond, not only for her students, but also for the staff in our building. Kristy plays a key role in fostering a positive and connected school culture. She organizes and leads events which are designed to boost morale and strengthen relationships among staff. Her dedication to creating a supportive and joyful environment has had a meaningful impact on our school community. Kristy is also a creative and passionate educator who consistently inspires those around her to find new and engaging ways to make learning fun. Kristy is always developing innovative games and activities that are current, exciting, and tailored to her students' interests. Kristy has been actively involved in our district for many years, contributing her time, energy, and expertise in a variety of meaningful ways. As a new teacher, that being Rebecca, who nominated her, it has been incredibly inspiring to witness the strong positive connections she has built with colleagues, students, and families throughout the school community. Her ability to foster relationships and maintain a lasting presence in the district is a true testament to her dedication and leadership. Kristy, come on up. Our next Navigator recipient is John Kelch, who's the head custodian at BMS, nominated by Carrie Boyce-Cleare, the theater teacher at BMS. John goes above and beyond in his job to collaborate with everyone, students, staff, families, and all community members. John always has a smile on his face despite the extremely difficult job that he has at our school. He is kind, supportive, helpful, and full of joy. John truly cares about our school, our district, and our students. He makes sure that the school building is a welcoming, safe, and comfortable space for all of us, and he demonstrates creativity and problem-solving daily in our school. No matter what weird request I have sent John, he has always come through with a solution. Because of everything John does for our school, the students and staff at BMS are always set up for success and feel truly comfortable here. Congratulations, John. Our last staff recipient is Jen Ward, who's the Health and Wellness Educator at BES. This nomination came from Kristy Hawkes, kindergarten teacher. Jen Ward is an exceptional and deeply valued member of the Bourndale-Almonte School Community. Her impact reaches far beyond the classroom, as she consistently brings energy, dedication, and kindness to every aspect of school life. A passionate and invested educator, Jen puts students at the heart of everything she does, working with learners from preschool through second grade and supporting them academically, socially, and emotionally. Jen is also a positive force in building school culture among staff, fostering a warm, inclusive environment where staff feel connected and appreciated. From decorating for birthdays to hosting monthly staff yoga sessions before school, Jen finds meaningful ways to bring people together and lift spirits. She is a compassionate colleague and always supportive, going the extra mile to support her coworkers. She has a true heart of gold and purple if you're in Bourne. Jen's welcoming presence, generous spirit, and unwavering support for both students and staff exemplifies what it means to lead with heart and purpose. Her influence continues to make Bourndale a better, brighter place for everyone. Jen, come on up. Congratulations. So again, we congratulate everyone on the nominations and your awards that you received. Did you want to do a group picture of the staff and then all the students? So of all the students that were here tonight that received awards, come on up. We're gonna do a group picture.
I'm organized.
Yeah, you can throw in your awards so you can...
Oh yeah, show it off. Open it.
We do a few rows, maybe two, three rows.
Oh JT, the seniors are here.
So congratulations to everyone, to all of our awardees, to all of the people who nominated. Thank you. You did extra work there, Mrs. Strode, but thank you for recognizing so many folks. I mean, the Navigator Award was established about four years ago by the school committee. That's why, you know, they ran it, but I'm, as a superintendent, I am just as proud, if not more, of our students who are really charting their own course, who are doing great things. I love the variety of why students were nominated. And our staff members, we have so many incredible staff members. This is recognizing just a few for their amazing contributions this year, so congratulations. You're all wonderful. We'll take a quick break because we have a long meeting after this, and I'm sure you all want to get back to whatever great things are supposed to happen tonight for you. So we'll give you another huge round on your way out.
And then right after, y'all know, like, like, what's one day, session coming to the end, Chris, I have spoken major to my staff.
Congratulations, my girls.
Congratulations, Becca.
Hi, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you. You got a couple of them there, right?
We'll have to give them, okay?
JT. I'd like to give you what the teacher said. You've already heard it a million times. You're gonna be like, yeah. He's so awesome.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, too. I saw it.
Okay, we're going to reconvene. Thanks for coming, you guys. Alrighty, so next we have Ms. Zoe Noonan, the Student Advisory Report. You don't have one for June. Got it. Yes. Well, we're so glad you're here. And then, Dr. Jo, the superintendent of the school, please.
All right. I'm so excited. We could have a meeting right now. But we do have, this is literally hot off the press, if a press was still, you know, a thing that we use, it's digitally right out of my email. I haven't seen this yet, but I was really excited to get it today. So, where are you? There we go. This is the very first preview of the graphically designed new strategic plan. So it still can be tweaked, there's still some other elements to come in, but I thought I would let you see it. So I'll just scroll through as we look. It's all of the text that you've already approved, just so you know, but with all the really great elements now that show who our canalmen are. There's our team. And these are all our kiddos, these are not stock photos, these are all canalmen doing amazing canalmen things. Our mission. Vision. Our core values. What's missing is the dashboard, so there will be a one-pager that goes with this as well, so real easy, a one-pager, that's what's still under development, but this 22-pager is kind of ready to roll. Our theory of action. And then each of our focus areas. It's important for everyone to see themselves in this, and so literally, there I am. That's why we wanted so many graphics and, you know, pictures of our own canalmen. But we also want our kids especially to be able to see how this will affect them, how they're part of it, and why we do all that we do. There you go.
That looks great.
Hot off the email.
Oh my goodness, that looks really good.
I love how they did the canalmen with the...
Oh, with the waves.
With the waves, yes.
Beautiful.
And she said there's also a few other graphics that are canal-related or bridges-related, and they're not all in yet, but it's a great start.
Yeah, I mean, it looked great. It was, you were going fast, but you could really, yeah, read it. I love it.
So that is strategic plan. Next steps for strategic plan is obviously we'll work with the graphic designer to get the final elements, then we'll publish it and do a larger press release around it so that everyone can see it. It'll go on our website. And then we'll start over the summer finding ways to start to integrate some of the new mission, vision, core values, and the graphics of that into kind of all that we do. So into our, maybe not our letterhead right away, but it's like all the different pieces so we can start branding around it as well. So very exciting. Additionally, a part of the next steps, our first, one of our first action steps, as you remember, was the Facilities and Enrollment Best Use Report from NESDEC. So many words, right? Kendalyn found that, there was just so many long titles. The good news is, we, meaning Jordan and I, have already received a draft copy. That's how final they are, which is good. We've sent back to them some typos that we found, some possible inaccuracies, as in how many computers are there, is it 17 or seven? Let's go back and count, like some really minor things. But we're hoping that we will have it for our admin retreat, which is on the 18th, and then for your retreat, which will be in the beginning of July. So we'll be able to really start moving and really looking at all of those pieces and starting to think about possible options for a year from this fall. So we're on track to be able to have our community forum to really discuss that and hit our budget planning timeline. So again, all very exciting and kind of falling right in line. So great things. In other great news, all four of our collective bargaining agreements, our CBAs that were negotiated and ratified in January or previous, have all been fully drafted. It's in the hands of the BEA right now, they're looking over it, and we're just doing little housekeeping things, like where there might be either typos or heading changes, nothing of substance. But it looks pretty good, and it also was reformatted by yours truly to have a hyperlink so that you can find the section and go to things right away. So I think it'll be very user-friendly as a digital document now. We're moving past the paper, which is really nice. And then lastly, for my part of the special topics, this is big news, and it will be in a press release that will be coming out. I'll put it up, I'll put it up on the screen. We're announcing our candidate for the BMS principalship. So here we go. This will be a press release that comes out tonight. I do, before I say this, I want to really thank everyone involved in the search process, everyone from our student focus groups, our teachers, everyone who is on the search committee that went over a month, and especially our chair, Chris Oliver, for commandeering that. We really had a great candidate pool, and two amazing finalists were sent our way for final interviews. But ultimately, our new BMS principal is Lisa Slidoba. And I'll read here, and you'll see this in our press release. So Slidoba brings over a decade of experience in Massachusetts public schools, most recently serving as principal of the Randolph Community Middle School. She succeeds Christine Boring, who was selected, as we know, as a new assistant superintendent. Slidoba was selected following a rigorous search process led by the Bourne Middle School Principal Search Committee chaired by Director of Technology, Chris Oliver. The committee reviewed 18 applicants and conducted multiple rounds of interviews, site visits, focus groups, that included parents, staff, and students. I don't have to read my quotes, but you can read those in the paper. The Bourne Middle School Search Committee Chairperson, Chris, described the hiring process as deliberate and thorough, noting that the focus groups were instrumental in recommending Slidoba. So during her tenure at Randolph Community Middle School, Lisa led a multidisciplinary team that achieved a 10% reduction in chronic absenteeism in a single year. She developed school improvement plans focused on student outcomes and staff development. Her previous roles include assistant principal at Randolph High School and Randolph Community Middle School, as well as various leadership and teaching positions in Bellingham and the Bay County Collaborative. So you can read a little more about her, and she will be joining us at a future meeting. But because it was literally all so hot off the press, I wanted to share that with you tonight. We are finalizing that press release, including a photo, and we'll send it out to the entire staff this evening. I'll make sure that goes out after this meeting so that they're all aware. Because I'm sure everyone isn't tuning into your meeting, even though it is very important, but I will make sure that it goes out to the whole staff with, again, my thanks for them participating. So that concludes my section, and I will turn it over to Christine Boring.
Thank you, Dr. Jo. Can I just ask when she starts?
July 1st.
July 1st.
Yep, she will be here for our admin retreat on the 18th, but... Um, but again, Chris and his team did what I asked, which is please get us someone that can hit the ground running and start right on July 1st, so, yeah.
Good job, Chris.
Thank you so much. Uh, so we have, um, one resource to just discuss. Uh, we do have other, um, resources to vote on later, but we did present one resource that is not a core resource. It's a supplemental resource, um, that we'll be using in, um, the ES. Uh, it's called the Hegarty Bridge to Writing. Uh, we've also added a supplemental, um, writing piece, Empowering Writers. It's been in the district, um, previously, but we're bringing that back to the forefront for three through eight, actually. So, this Hegarty will be a very nice complement to that so that all of our students have, um, a structured writing program to go with the ARC core curriculum. Um, so they have been piloting, um, Hegarty this, uh, year, and with great success. The teachers are very excited about this program, and actually, um, I'll talk a little bit about the Day of AI in a minute, but there was a Day of AI lesson that included a Hegarty component with an AI component. So, I think the teachers are very excited to utilize this, again, along with ARC, and to, um, bring just a little bit more structure to the writing instruction process. And the UFLI, yes, as well. Uh, the UFLI, um, grammar and phonics component. Thank you. So, yeah, so this is just for your information. There you go. I take no, uh, no credit for memes. Um, other, uh, teaching and learning updates, we're certainly coming in on the last few days of what has been a very positive year, um, in terms of curriculum and instruction for the Bourne Public Schools. Uh, tomorrow marks the official last day of MCAS in all of the schools. I don't know if Lisa is still over there. Carrie and the torch with Bio, yes, so. I was like, yeah. Yeah, last one. Um, it will be sometime before we have our official MCAS results, of course, but what we do know is that we successfully administered all tests at all grade levels, uh, three through 10. I just want to note our administrators and our technology team, it was a new, um, platform for MCAS this year, which included, um, some hurdles, some learning curves. Um, the tech team was present in every building, every day of testing. Uh, they certainly witnessed some of my frustration as a principal with the system, but, but I think we all, um, you know, again, to our administrative team overall, who learned the system and got everything up and rolling, and also to our students. So, the tests, um, functioned a little bit differently, and they had some new tests. Science was a new format, um, and the civics test was new as well. And so, for, and that eighth grade, those eighth grade students who engaged in, uh, four MCAS tests, they are really to be thanked for their efforts. Um, so I do want to just share my appreciation for our students. I think one thing that we noted across the board was that our kids gave a very strong effort on every single day of MCAS testing, and we're very proud of that. And also just to our educators who really dug in and made sure that they were prepared and, and invested in giving that effort. So, a thank you to everyone who's involved in that. Um, all the buildings are also finishing up with the last few, um, benchmark assessments. And, you know, while assessment data is only telling part of the story about a student, um, it does provide essential information about student growth and mastery of grade level standards, and it provides us with quite a bit of information to plan, uh, for next year. So, we are grateful for all of that work. Uh, we had two very successful professional development days, May 22nd and May 23rd, where educators engaged in a wide array of PD sessions, from trauma-informed practice to AI in the classroom to math workshop, early literacy, transition planning, the list goes on and on. A huge thank you to Dr. Starkey, um, and also Jessie Clements and Lisa Dix, who planned not only these two days, but really the entire year of, um, a cohesive professional development plan of Making Connections. So, it was just a really nice, strong ending to that. Uh, connected to our PD day and our year-long theme of Making Connections, many educators spent part of, um, either that Thursday or Friday, PD time, planning for a Day of AI, a day dedicated to introducing students to AI tools at every level and in every subject area. The official Day of AI is June 3rd, uh, but we've had AI lessons going on throughout the week. Everything from spot the difference in coding to AI-created animal coloring pages, um, to writing feedback using AI tools, and so much more. So, we are compiling right now, um, some photos and, and synopsises of the different lessons, and we'll be sharing that out soon. Um, we have so many, um, incredible events. It's just such a busy time of year, but we're really spotlighting all of the wonderful things that have happened all year. Um, the principals certainly are going to speak to you more about these, but the senior internship showcase, art shows, music performances, um, in and out of school presentations, field trips, family events, step-up day. It could go on endlessly.
As many of you know.
Yes, as you know as parents, and we all know as educators. Um, I know the principals, again, will share more, but overall, we've just really had an incredible display of learning that's occurred across the district, and just want to congratulate everyone on that.
Very nice. Thank you, Mrs. Boring. I have one question.
Sure.
Um, please. So, how are the students reacting to the AI?
I think they're...
Are they excited?
Excited and more accustomed to it than we are. And one of the things that I've seen in a lot of the classes at the middle school, for instance, is AI feedback on essays. So, they run their essay through a feedback tool, and then they utilize that feedback as part of their, um, revision process. And I think they're, they're, they take it in stride because they have AI as part of their everyday life, really, already. So, it's, it's nice to kind of show them the ways that it can be very practical and useful, um, and, you know, help them see there's other things besides maybe asking it to write an essay for you. So, yeah, I think there's, I, I think they've really been enjoying the lessons and seeing it in, in a variety of ways.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Geist. Are you next? Yes, budget and facilities.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, it's a busy time of year for, for my office. Um, you know, we're closing, beginning to close down one fiscal year and open up another, and everything that goes into that. We've, on the facility side, we've had our first kickoff meetings for both the solar commission project at the middle school, as well as the BMS, um, Chiller Project. Both of those will be happening this summer. When I get timelines, I'll let everyone know who needs to know. Also getting ready for next year in terms of, uh, transportation. So, we'll be sending out the new transportation signup form to all the families and caregivers across the district. That is for everyone to fill out who wants a seat on the bus. It is due July 21st at 6:00 PM, but we're really thankful for all the families out there who get that into us right away because the sooner we have all the information, the sooner we can get those routes done and posted. So, it's a big help, and a huge shout-out in advance for Sue Downing, who basically lives at the office, um, towards the end of the summer to get all the, the routing done. Much appreciated. Uh, just a couple of quick reminders to, to caregivers that there is no bus fee for students who reside in Bourne. There is a fee portion on the form that confuses people, so I've bolded it, I've underlined it. And our policy currently is that if you are a school choice student seeking transportation, um, and if there is a seat available, you go through that process, you fill out the form. Sue Downing will notify you if there's an available seat, and they'll, they work on, uh, the closest, um, local bus stop to get them to. Those families are the only ones who have to pay the bus fee. It's $75 per student, the cap of $150 per family. And that's really all I have, in case there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Geist. And Mr. Oliver.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, the technology department has been busy wrapping up the school year, uh, between assisting with MCAS testing, which is on a new platform, uh, which, uh, Ms. Boring was talking about earlier, and making sure we collected all of our senior Chromebooks. This week, our department has been busy helping out across the district. As the year comes to an end, uh, we will need to collect the rest of our grade six through 11 devices. And just a reminder to parents and caregivers at home, to please make sure your student returns both their Chrome device as well as the charger. Sometimes getting the chargers back can be, can be a little challenging. So, just a reminder to all those, uh, parents and caregivers out there. In addition, myself, along with three administrative assistants, attended a Parent Square, Massachusetts Regional Impact Day last week. Uh, it took place in, uh, Westport. Along with educators from the Boston Public Schools, New Bedford Public Schools, and many others, we learned about best practices and success stories from other districts, uh, in the region. Uh, we continue to have great success pushing notifications out. Um, I see the metrics, and they, they continue to get better every day as far as, uh, who's receiving them, uh, emails that are bouncing back, and we're, we're cleaning up that data. And I'm pleased to announce that, um, we will also, um, with, um, some convincing from, um, Dr. McGuire at the high school, uh, we will begin using Student Square as well, um, in the fall. And that would be for our students, especially at the high school, uh, sports teams. Uh, because she, she really made it, and it certainly makes sense that the, the high school staff really made a push. Um, if we're going to use this, this is something that for the parents, it only makes sense, especially for, and that's really where we're going to pilot it, is with, with our sports teams to see how, to see how it works out with the coaches. So, this way, it's a universal platform across the entire district, both parents and students.
That is awesome.
So, stay tuned.
Yeah, that's so awesome. Now, um, the student that has, is that's on the sports team, will that parent get that same information?
Uh, depending on the way we set it up, yes.
Okay.
Yes, but the intent would be, absolutely.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Student services and special education update.
Alright, I'm, I'm wearing that hat today. I believe I'm speaking in first person, so pretend. I am Kristen. Uh, as we close out school year 2425, I want to take this opportunity to report out on a few major accomplishments. We have successfully navigated our transition from eSped to Power School. All students are now in the new platform. This is technology-wise. And we continue to learn how to navigate the system to help with efficiencies, especially in the area of state reporting. A huge thank you to Chris Oliver for helping to make sure we're in alignment with the SIS, Student Information System, side of Power School. In addition, a thank you to Kate Hartley and Tara Dalmy for being our department tech assistants by helping to problem-solve and generate professional development for the Special Education Department. In addition, Bourne has navigated to the new Massachusetts IEP format. Parents and teachers are reporting the benefits of the increased student voice in the meetings and for framing the focus of the documents. Students are presenting in a variety of ways, including written scripts, interviews with staff, and PowerPoint presentations. It's truly an individual process. As you are also aware, the district had many audits this year, not just in special education. The special education audit, or TFM, Tiered Focus Monitoring, was completed, and Desi has approved the corrective action plan. A sincere thank you to the many who helped to ensure that the corrective action plan will result in meaningful professional development and improvement and improve our procedures. And just as editorial, they almost always have a corrective action plan because that's their job to tell us something that we're not quite doing right yet. Um, but ours was very minimal, so it's a good thing. Uh, more recently, we had a wonderful PD session. The specialists continue to work on the guidance provided by Dr. Hollenbeck on how to facilitate increased connections between the clinical work and the general education classroom. It was truly a productive session. In addition, special education teachers continue to work on navigating Power School, and ESPs were thrilled with their session on strategy implementation. And lastly, ESY, our Extended School Year, is set to begin on July 7th. Again, a special thank you to Principal Carbonino and Dr. McGuire for hosting this program in their buildings. It should be a summer of continued learning and fun. So, there you go.
Very nice. Thank you, Mrs. Donahue.
You're welcome. Um, and along with one last, um, hiring announcement that we'll have a press release soon. In case you haven't heard, we will have a brand-new athletic director starting, um, this summer. Um, our wonderful athletic director, Scott Ashworth, is retiring mid-year, so he decided to step down and continue to be a, a PE teacher, but the athletic directorship has transferred over to, um, to KT Alexander. And we're very excited for her to begin that work. She'll continue to have a caseload of, she's our current APE, Adaptive Physical Education. Um, so she'll continue to do some of that. Other PE teachers will also pick up that caseload, and she'll be, um, the athletic director working, um, mostly in the after-school capacity and the end of the school day. So, she is also really excited. Um, in her final interview, she expressed that it was one of her kind of lifelong career goals, so it's a dream come true. Um, and we're just excited for the passion, um, all the purple she bleeds, right? Because she is a canalman through and through. Um, and, and we think that it's just going to be a great transition, especially with Mr. Ashworth still here to be able to mentor her. So, um, there'll be a press release on that, too, because I think especially for all of our families from grade seven on up who are part of the athletic department, they'll want to get to know her. If they don't already, she's been a coach with us for a while. So, uh, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Nice. Thank you, Dr. Jo.
You're welcome.
And just a special thank you to, um, Coach Ashworth. He is amazing, really, really.
And he will continue to coach until he retires.
Yes, yes. He is awesome. We're really going to miss him, but we still get him for another year, right?
I didn't want our basketball players to think that he wasn't coaching.
No, 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 no.
Even though his birthday's in February.
Okay, good. Yeah, no, so we'll still have him. That's awesome. Okay, so announcements and correspondence. That, um, so Mrs. Carbonino?
Sure.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Just going to turn it away from the audience.
We're just going to do that.
I think the audience has been with my announcements this morning, this evening. Um, so welcome, new members. It's nice to have you here. Um, last night, we had our POPS with the principal event, so we had our class of 2038 come in. Um, we had almost all of our families. We had, um, probably close to about 70 families come through last night. Um, our second grade student council gave the tours for their families, so they got to go around and meet the kindergarten teachers, see our building, um, have pops, and, um, that was probably the highlight of their day. Um, and then Roger Tinkell for some music, so it was a really fun night. Today, we ended up having a step-up day, so thank you to BIS for hosting our second grade students. Um, they got to go over and spend a little morning, a day in the life of a third grader, and get to see what they're going to be doing next year. And then this afternoon, our whole building stepped up. So, our preschool students went to our kindergarten classes, kindergarten went to first grade, and first grade went to second grade. Um, and everybody walked around a little taller today. Thought they were pretty cool that they got to go to their next grade. So, um, our kindergarten students, a lot of them think they're actually going to first grade tomorrow. It was a very fun day. Um, tomorrow evening, we have our PTA end-of-year beach party, so, uh, we have cotton candy, DJ Ooch, uh, Mrs. Carbonino in a dunk tank, and lots of fun prizes, so that should be a great time. This is going to be warm, so I can't complain too much. Um, our last day of school for our preschool friends is actually a week from tomorrow, next Thursday. Um, they're celebrating with a dance party as well. And then, um, on Sunday, the 15th, right before our last day of school, Mrs. Boring is once again leading our first grade students in the national anthem at the Bourne Braves game. So, if anybody is around, I know it's Father's Day, but if anybody's around, that'd be a great time.
That's so nice. Thank you, Mrs. Carbonino.
Mrs. Colbert?
Mrs. Colbert, yes. I didn't know which order they were.
Well, we switch it up every day.
I know, I think she was on the edge of her seat.
Good evening, everybody. To, to start and touch upon what Christina had mentioned, we have just recently wrapped up our end-of-year benchmarks. Um, and I want to start by highlighting that because at a quick glance, um, the BIS students in both reading and in math really knocked it out of the park this year. Um, and looking at our OLA end-of-year benchmarks, um, we have 79.5% of our students who are meeting or exceeding grade level expectations in their reading with an average of 1.21 years of growth, um, for the end of the year. So, that was fabulous. Thank you very much. Huge, huge, uh, thanks to the teachers. They, they really worked extremely hard. Um, and not to be outdone, but our math teachers, um, really exceeded expectations. We have 87% of our math students, um, who exceed, met or exceeded grade level expectations in their Happy Members assessments. So, one data point, but huge, huge kudos to them. They worked really, really hard. So, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that. So, thank you very much. Uh, BIS began the summer kickoff, uh, just last week, right before June. Um, we're a little ahead of them. We're feeling it right now, knowing we still have another week. Jumping on a little bit. Um, we held our annual Art and Ice Cream Social. Um, and for those of you who have attended the art show in the past, um, this was my first year, and Mrs. Donovan, Dawn played it, although I think it was, it blew my mind away. Um, how she inspires our students to bring out their best. Um, the artwork was so creative. It was so beautiful, um, and truly a lot of talent that we saw. I think the most incredible thing that was new to me is, um, Mrs. Donovan is a member of, it's Artsonia, I believe, is the organization, and she took a piece of artwork from each student and turned it into a poster, um, and online. And it's a fundraiser that she, she does each year, but parents can go online and select a variety of different things if they wanted it on mug or whatever. So, it's really, it was a really cool addition that I had never, um, experienced. But Mrs. Donovan, being Mrs. Donovan, has already started planning for next year. So, if you see her dressed as either a pirate or a princess the first day of school, that is the theme going into next year. Um, Pirates and Princesses will be the art show theme for, for next year. Very exciting. We already started planning. Today, as Mrs. Carbonino said, we had welcomed the incoming, uh, grade three kiddos to BIS, and, um, but we definitely were reminded how little they are when they're entering third grade. Um, they came in, um, demonstrating... were reminded how little they are when they're entering third grade. They came in demonstrating their B-to-B expectations. They all came in to the gym to begin with. We did a read-aloud where Mrs. Rutherford had shared a book called The Buddy Bench, and the students then had to locate our buddy bench outside in the foyer before we then went into third-grade classrooms, where each of the classrooms had a different activity for the kids to participate in. And it was really, really cool to see. But now, third graders, working with the incoming third graders, were showing them what it's like to be a big kid. We concluded with a tour of the school, but I will say the highlight was definitely eating lunch in the cafeteria, and today was ice cream day, so they had special sherbet, and then went to go play on the playground. So that definitely was the highlight. Many were disappointed that they didn't get to go back out. So that's more to come. Tomorrow, we're welcoming in, we're excited, it'll be my first senior walk. I've got some teachers who are very excited to see their kiddos coming down, and we've got tissues already prepared for them. Next Monday and Tuesday are the BIS field days, so Monday is grades three and grades four, and grade five is on Tuesday, weather depending. And I know Mr. Kelch has put a lot of time and effort into organizing this. I was told he brings things out at five-thirty in the morning to get things set. We will then have our fourth-grade picnic on Tuesday as well. And then we are going to be hosting our retirees on Wednesday, the eleventh, if you can join us at Bucatino's, from four to six. We have, as you know, several that are retiring after decades and decades and decades in this district. So it's a true honor to be able to wish them well and send them off with some, some gifts. And then the fifth graders will be having their end-of-the-year picnic and award ceremony. Each grade does their own independent one, it's not school-based, they do their own special ones per grade, per team, and that will be on Friday. And then we wrap it up with our last day of school on Monday. So super excited. I will say, from the bottom of my heart, I do want to thank everybody for a wonderful first year. I didn't think I would cry today, and then I started crying when there's nothing to do, so I think I'd cry. And every, every time I've been up to this podium, but from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you. My children are thriving here in the Cape, and I have to say, it's, it's definitely the best decision that we've made. So thank you all.
That's awesome. We're so happy you're here.
Thank you.
Mrs. Culber.
Last but not least.
Dr. Maguire, yes, Dr. Maguire.
We could still do the middle school.
No, we could do BIS, yeah.
We'll do, we'll do.
Or BMS.
I was walking out in your face.
Even so busy going over everything we forgot, she doesn't want to forget.
It was great.
Yeah, not to, not to forget about the middle school. It's a work there sometimes. So just a huge thank you to everyone who participated in Curriculum Night at BMS. We had a very robust art show. Meg Gerard, just, again, I know Noel was talking about Gillian, but same, like just incredible artwork out of these students. She, this year, the theme was home, and there was interactive art you could engage with. You could get a tattoo of an animal that you might have at your house. There was just such wonderful work on display. There was also really outstanding academic work on display throughout the building. There was interactive science experiments going on, and the book fair, and it was all complimented by ice cream. Thank you so much to Lazy Sundays who donated and our PTA who supported that event. It was just a really, it's a really nice spring event, so thank you to everyone who came out and did that. Congratulations to our band and chorus students who had very strong concerts this week. Well done. They were wonderful concerts and of both under an hour, which I feel makes it a perfect concert. As a music teacher, it is the sweet spot. So yeah, not, that is not a knock, that is a compliment. Our students have enjoyed a variety of field trips over the past few weeks. Our, many of our eighth-grade students attended the Washington DC trip. It was a very successful trip. My phone did not ring one time. It was wonderful. I know, right? No one's phone rang. And those students that stayed in Bourne got to go on a field trip every day that they were home. Thanks really to Shawna A. Flag and the eighth-grade team that stayed back for organizing that, and of course Cindy Bodwin for organizing the DC trip. The stops for the eighth graders at home included Mass Maritime and also the National or Cape Cod Wildlife Center. Grade seven just spent two days, one for each team, at Wacoit Bay, doing a day of local science. And grade seven also attended, thanks to Anne Marie Strode and our Career Connected Learning Team, the Senior Internship Showcase during the day, and got to really interact with, they had little passports for them, they got to interact with the interns. It was a really awesome experience for them. And then a huge thank you to the interns who came over the next day and delivered Future Canalman t-shirts to our seventh graders. They wore them with pride the next day, and I've seen them all, multiple times, actually, since last week, so that is a good sign. We have a few trips still to come. We wish our community band students well as they perform. It's actually a competition at the Great East Music Festival on Friday. Our student council, students are attending a team-building field trip next week, and a very exciting, but very last-minute field trip. Huge congratulations to Rebecca Salgado and our drama club students. So METG for the musical theater, they go throughout the year to all of the performances at the performance sites, and then in the spring, in June, they announce the nominees. So two days ago, they announced that we had thirteen students nominated for METG Musical Theater Awards, is three individuals and then also group categories. These students are invited to Lawrence High School on Monday for the awards ceremony, Monday night. And Rebecca actually came in today and called the kids down and gave them their nomination certificates, and it was really great.
That's a big deal. That's a huge group.
It's a huge deal. Yeah, it's a huge group. So yeah, so kudos to her. An exceptional show. We hosted fifth grade today. They were not little. That is a tall fifth grade.
You are the tallest fifth grader I've ever seen. I was shorter than all of them, and they were very excited. I know, it doesn't say a lot. They were very excited about middle school, I think. They got to see the theater preview, they got a band and chorus overview,
they learned about our schedule, they spent time in the homerooms, and they asked a lot of very good questions, mostly about the bus. It was very exciting. And where could they use their phones? The answer is nowhere.
Oh, and lunch.
Lunch was a big one.
Lunch was a big one, too? Lunch, not to me. I got, because I told them they had to know where they lived to take the late bus home, and so then they were like, all about the bus. So we have still so many fun events coming up. We're kicking off summer next week. The grade-six theater students presenting their one-act plays, grade-seven is going fishing with PE, and they also engage in two days of friendly competition that is still connected to their history curriculum. They stage their own Olympics. Grade eight, grade eight has their culminating civic action project showcase on Tuesday. It is, I believe it's starting at seven forty-five, and it is a really exceptional display of student work. And then, grade eight is going to finish the week off with an award ceremony that they do themselves. Every student receives recognition during that. They are going to have an ice cream social Thursday afternoon. They have a grade-eight dance Thursday night. And then they organized a student staff, and I believe there will be some local community members involved in a dodgeball game. So that is going to be very exciting. Donnell, we have a team for you. You look pretty excited. We also celebrated our retirees today, and that's just why Chris and I came in on two wheels. We had a great retirement party at the chart room for our staff tonight. And I just want to acknowledge our staff at BMS. These events that are happening all throughout these two weeks, they don't just happen, they take a ton of planning and a ton of work on the behalf of the teachers, and they really do make it a great end of the year for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now you may go, Dr. Maguire. Thank you.
I'm still ready. Great. Over the last two weeks, we've had incredible exhibitions of student learning at the high school. Our sophomores displayed results from their social studies civic action projects under the supervision of Ms. Center and Mr. Donovan, thanks to both of them. Project topics were as varied and diverse as our student population, and students were able to share their interests and the results of their work with peers' parents and other visitors at their showcase. In the AP Capstone Showcase, students from AP Seminar and AP Research shared their impressive findings. I'm going to share a little more on this because the classes are both new, year-two and year-one, so I just want to give you a little more info. In AP Seminar, it's a year-long course in which students investigate real-world issues from multiple perspectives. They learn to synthesize information from different sources, develop their own perspectives in research-based written essays, and design and deliver oral and visual presentations, both individually and as part of a team. During the course, students complete a team project and an individual paper and presentation, as well as take a written end-of-course exam. In AP Research, students deeply explore an academic topic, problem, or issue of interest to them. They design, plan, and conduct a year-long research-based investigation to address a research question, documenting their process with a portfolio. The course ends with a four-to-five-thousand-word academic paper and a presentation with an oral defense, which contributes to the overall AP Research course. To say our student work here was impressive is a complete understatement. I want to wish the students in both courses the best of luck. If they earn qualifying scores in both courses, they do earn an AP Capstone diploma recognition. And thank you to Mrs. Sylvia and Mr. Leroy for their guidance and support of our students' journey in these two courses. Our school-to-career culminating activity is the internship showcase, designed to allow students to share what they've learned through their year-long internship experiences. Internships offer a unique opportunity for students to step out of the classroom and into the real world, where they can apply the knowledge and skills they've acquired here at school. These experiences not only enhance their academic understanding, but also provide invaluable insights into potential career paths. We were so fortunate to have the seventh grade up in the morning, and then the showcase was open to families and guests in the, in the afternoon, including Dr. Jill and two speakers from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed at the ceremony. Thank you to Mrs. Strode for her work with our seniors this year. The fine and performing arts department offered a variety of public performances to close out the year. The spring concert featured incredible talent and growth of all of our student vocalists and instrumentalists in a celebration of music and harmony. The cabaret allowed our music students to share their end-of-the-year personalized performances as they selected the music and partners who best displayed their talents and passion. Thank you to Mrs. Fornier. The music program is going to miss her love and expert guidance in her retirement. Our annual art show was creative and inspiring, featuring a variety of mediums, including film shorts from cinematography and motion graphics students this year, as well as work in 2D, 3D, and graphic arts. Thank you to Ms. Henriksen Rowland and Mr. Silver for his work with our students, and an extra shout-out to Mr. Silver for setting up a great show. The theater program held an end-of-the-year gala with the first National Thespian Society induction and scholarships awarded. Thank you to Mr. Burke for his hard work with our student performers. The DECA program celebrated its success as they showcased their achievements and experiences from a year of dynamic competitions and entrepreneurial excellence. The DECA program has been a meaningful complement to our business pathway, bringing relevant real-world learning projects to our students and over seventy-four student participants in the competitive aspect of DECA. A walkthrough of our school store spaces shows the investment our students are making in the program and our, and to our school community, as those spaces are set to open at the end of this month. Thank you to Mrs. Maurice for her work in bringing this program to Bourne and helping our students meet with success in its sophomore year. A special shout-out to the class of twenty-twenty-five, experiencing their senior week this week, just back from Six Flags, and they have their Walk the Halls tomorrow, complete with a time machine. Stay tuned for a video collaboration between our BES kindergartners and our seniors that we're going to film tomorrow when they are over there. Culminating in graduation on Saturday, we cannot wait to celebrate the milestone with them and wish them well that closes out this chapter. The annual underclass and junior book awards ceremony will take place on Friday, June thirteenth, at eight AM in the auditorium. We've invited all parents of students receiving recognition to join us for this event. Our staff feels that this is a very special event, where they get to speak and, and write a very nice tribute to the student that they selected for the year. So it's a very special event between our students and staff, and this will be the second year that we have asked parent and caregivers to join us.
That's a great idea.
We'll close out the year on Monday, the sixteenth, with our B-to-B recognition field day. So we're excited for that as well.
Is that for all grades?
All grades.
All grades. Is that?
Three, all three grades.
Right. No, 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 I wasn't questioning the grade. Sorry. Is this the first year we're doing that?
Second year.
Second year?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, wow.
So a little interclass competition, Kona Ice Truck. Teams will get their schedules in the morning, make sure that they're squared away for what summer assignments they need to do, and then we'll collectively head out to the fields and have a little fun together for a wonderful year.
That's awesome.
That was great last year, yeah.
That's so great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Maguire.
So what I thought Dr. Maguire would say is Saturday is graduation.
Oh, yes. Oh, my gosh, we totally.
With all of this coming up, ten AM on Jackson Field, all of you are invited, and if you haven't yet, please RSVP to Mrs. Guy. Dr. Maguire, we do have two new members, though, who might not have gotten the invite, so you could either tell myself or Dr. Maguire, if you'll be up there, and we'll make sure that we have a chair for you. It's a lovely ceremony, and hopefully it won't be too hot. But we'll be in full regalia this year, which will be really exciting.
Oh, I heard that, yes.
A lot of schools, you know, do this, where we all dress up. It's kind of very Harry Potter-ish, but we, we, you know, to honor our graduates, we wear basically the last degree that we've earned. So you'll see the different things on the arms or the hoods, and so the full high school staff and all of us will have regalia. It'll be pretty neat.
Very nice.
Two more quickies, and I know it's running long, but I, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Lisa Dix for the canal walk that we had last week, and Mass DOT, they came out and talked about the bridges, and they were lots of fun. You can see a nice article and pictures in Bourne Enterprise, if you weren't able to make it, but some of you were, which was really nice. And lastly, we had a really amazing retiree celebration that many of you were also at. We had seventeen retirees that we honored. Some retired mid-year, and then some will retire in the first month of the school year, so we just kind of scooped them all up for the, for the celebration. But I do want to name them publicly for folks who are watching at home. So we want to thank, for her twenty-one years of service to Bourne Public Schools, Kathleen Aft, I always say her name wrong, help me out, Liz.
Aftosmas.
Aftosmas, I know, it's a beautiful name, and I mess it up every time. Kathy has been with us for twenty-one years. Also, for twenty-one years, retiring this summer, Deb Bissonette, our unwaveringly amazing tech ESP, who was definitely part of all of the MCAS success and more. Twenty-three years as an ESP, Bev Callagie, we want to thank her. Twenty years as an ESP, Catherine Corsano, amazing. Twenty years as one of our building and grounds and custodians, and he, he retired mid-year, Ricky Dobbins, so we've honored him. Twenty-nine years as an ESP with us, Heather Donovan. I mean, these are, these are lifetimes spent serving the children of Bourne Public Schools. As we all know, Large Shoes to Fill, twenty-three years as a music teacher here at our, at our high school, Lisa Fornier Donnelly. And she also had a wonderful concert, as Dr. Maguire said. Eighteen years as an ESP, Diane Good, who's already back substituting with us. We love it when they come right back. Yep. Retiring in September after serving thirty-eight years. She is currently the top person on our seniority list, Mo Holden, so she'll be retiring in September. Our digital literacy teacher over at BIS, who had a full career before joining us nine years ago, is Christina Iarardi, also will be missed. Peggy King, I was going to say graduating, retiring from the middle school.
We can call it graduating.
After twenty-six years. She, she, twenty-six years for Bourne Public Schools. Flo Clemeola, fifteen years as an ESP. Marilyn Lynn, who had one of the best, we do a playing-on song as they come down to retirement row. It's like The Price is Right, but more fun. And so she had, hers was Girls Just Want to Have Fun.
That one was so good.
Yep, that's what she'll have. So twenty-seven years with us. And fifteen years with us as our health teacher, Beth Nolan. Fifteen years with us, as well as a speech and language pathologist, Kristy Sheehan, and she'll retire in September. Six years with us, but many years before that, Dr. Michael Smith. And last but not least, thirty years with us as a grade K teacher and otherwise special ed teacher, Diane Steele. So unbelievable, so much dedication to Bourne Public Schools. I couldn't let the, this meeting go on without recognizing that. So, thank you. That actually concludes our report.
Thank you. Okay, school committee, subcommittee, and district committee reports. So, thank you, principals.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with curriculum subcommittee.
We had two meetings, yeah, yeah. We had two meetings this past month, but two of the items that are most pertinent today are things that, two items that we want to approve, if we want to do that now.
Yes, please.
We wanted to vote to approve the physics textbooks for BHS, as well as a vote to approve the marine science textbooks for BHS. And I guess the business online resource as well.
Yes, all three.
Yeah, all three along.
I think we talked about them at two different meetings, potentially.
So, where's the business online? It was right, it was right under it. It, that may be a copy, but it should be right under that.
Okay. Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the, do we need to do them separately?
Separately.
So first, we'll vote to approve the physics textbooks for BHS.
Second? Now we'll have to do a roll call. Roll call, okay. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And who was the second? I didn't hear it.
Me.
Excellent, great. Just for, when they watch the video, they'll be able to see.
Oh, yes, that's right, yeah.
And then I move to approve the marine science textbooks for BHS. And then I move to approve the marine science textbooks for BHS.
Okay. Second. That's individual as well?
Hmm.
Okay, yes. So Carrie?
Yes.
Donnell, yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
And last but not least, we vote to approve the business online resource for BHS.
Okay, roll call. Carrie, is that a?
Yes.
Carrie? Yes, you were right there. Donnell, yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, thank you, Carrie.
All right. And that's all we have for the curriculum subcommittee.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Policy subcommittee, that one was canceled.
Well, we didn't set a time. Yeah.
We didn't even set a time. We didn't have to cancel it. Yes. Okay, so we didn't have a meeting this, this past month. All righty.
But we do have a policy to vote. Do you want to take that up now or later?
Okay, the wellness policy.
For my last one, yes.
Yes, okay.
So essentially, we took it up then. And it was in draft form until we heard back from the Department of Ed. And as Mr. Guy said, they had no changes. So it's essentially exactly the same. That's why we didn't need the meeting, because they gave no changes.
Yes, yes.
But it is their ADF, which is the wellness policy done by the SWAC committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question on that. Am I allowed to ask a question?
Absolutely, that's.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Madam Chairwoman, you can ask any question you want.
So the first part of this, it said, so meaning, example of other, oh, what do we mean when we're putting the group together by community members as appropriate? Like, who would that be as an example? Like, when we're putting the?
Anybody who would care to join.
Okay. Does anybody from the public?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Parents, maybe.
Okay, all right, perfect. They don't necessarily have to have a child in the school? Nope? Okay, thank you. And then, so booster sales, um, okay, that's it. Thank you very much. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the school district wellness program, the policy ADF.
Okay, a second? Do we have to individually?
No, second.
Okay, thank you.
We just do roll call, though. Not roll call, just?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? No? Okay, great.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Yes, thank you.
It'll be like clockwork in a few months.
Yes, it will.
It adds a rhythm to it.
It does. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
All righty. So we'll go back. That's, oh, sorry.
If I could, I just want to thank the committee again. It was a lot of work to put that policy together.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you all for approving it. Thank you, Pete, on the committee. It was quite a team. And as a result of our work and our collaboration with the state, we are going to get a recognition banner as a Massachusetts school wellness champion.
Wow. Where would we hang something like that?
Whatever you tell me to.
How? We'll have to discuss that at our summer meeting. That's exciting, yes. Unbelievable job to you, Mr. Guy, and your team. I mean, it's so thorough, and you took into consideration, like when we were talking about snacks and things like that, healthy choices. And you guys did an unbelievable job. So thank you.
Well, it was a team effort, for sure.
Yes, yep. All righty, now.
Budget and facilities?
Budget and facilities subcommittee.
We did not meet today.
Oh.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, nothing new to report. Special education parent advisory council?
There was no meeting this week. Next week, there is a meeting to, I believe it's virtual, to vote for?
Elections.
Elections. Okay. All right, thank you. And then the Cape Cod Collaborative. Ms.
Maureen Fuller sent me a note that, oh, my goodness. Okay. So she wrote, at the May 14th Cape Cod Collaborative Board Meeting, the board approved the FY '26 budget, as well as the executive directors, is it COLA or C-O-L-A?
Cost of living.
Adjustment.
Okay, you say COLA?
Can you say COLA?
Okay, thank you. COLA and the Treasurers Annual Evaluation. Dr. Hope Hanscom, the executive director, informed the board that she will be a panelist at the Joint Mass, Masque Joint Conference this November to speak about the 50 years of the Individuals with Disabilities Educational Act and the role that collaborates, collaboratives have played by providing specialized services and support for students with complex needs. So thank you, Maureen Fuller. And just to put a little bug in everyone's ear, too, we're going to need a representative for the Cape Cod Collaborative. So if anyone is willing.
I do have the times. So it's usually the second Wednesday of the month at 5:15. So I was in error. I thought it was during the day.
Second Wednesday at 5:15. And is that always Zoom?
It's both. So they'll host in person for whomever would like to come. But it's also always virtual.
Is it in Hyannis?
No, it's Osterville.
Oh, Osterville. Oh, they have some nice shops down there, too. Okay, yes. All right, I'm going to look into that.
Gives you a reason.
It's not, it's not on Main Street, but yes.
Right, okay. Okay, so we can maybe discuss that. It's a real fun committee, too.
Donnell, weren't we going to go over the committees anyways that are summer retreat?
Yes, yes. But they need somebody to fill in. I'll have to, I'll step in.
When's the next meeting? Is it one, four, I'm thinking?
No.
Well, if it's the third, the second Wednesday, it might have been, it's probably the 11th. Yeah, I can try to find out. I think there's one before we would be, you know, asking, so.
Are you interested?
I can jump on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. That's awesome. That's really awesome. Okay, thank you. And the District Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee.
I believe we do not have a report from them right now.
We do not have a report. Okay. District Technology Committee.
We have not.
You have not.
Sorry, my fault. I think we do actually have a report for the DEIB.
There's a lot going on.
Yes.
There's always a lot going on.
Sorry.
I thought they were attending. Thank you, go ahead.
So, yeah, so Jesse Clements, who works on that committee, provided the update. Members of the committee will be attending the Race Amnesty Day Celebration on Sunday in Buzzards Bay Park from 11:30 to 1:00. Race Amnesty is the practice of recognizing and celebrating cultural and racial diversity. There will be live entertainment, pizza, and kids activities.
That's awesome.
Yeah, fantastic.
Did that go out to folks at home? Did you have that?
Yes, I believe that, yeah. So that went out as digital backpack.
Part of our digital backpack. And on social media and?
I don't know if it was on our social media, but it was in our digital backpack.
I don't believe it was. But I can certainly do it now.
Yeah, and then we can forward it to everybody. That sounds like a fun event.
Yeah. So they will be in attendance at that.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Fornier. And, Mr. Oliver, you said no meeting?
No meeting.
For the District Technology.
This month, no.
All right, thank you very much. Discussion on summer meeting dates. So we came up with July 2nd, is it the 3rd or the 2nd, sorry?
It's the 2nd.
2nd, yes, the 2nd. At 9:00. Does that work for everybody? So about 9:00 to 1:00, we'll bring breakfast and lots of treats for you guys, too.
Where do you eat?
So we'll meet in the media center?
Could be here or BIS.
Or BIS.
We can figure it out.
Yes, BIS. Yes, in their media center.
And I'm confirming with the NASDAQ folks, I believe they can attend and present that report, but it'd be virtual. So we'd be kind of seeing them. I'm not sure if they can come in person. But, and so, you know, usually just, well, for Christine, who's new, usually I just attend that, and you guys are always welcome. But again, especially to hear that report from them, if you can make it, or if you need a virtual link, then, yeah.
What, nice snacks? Did I mention that?
And then can we go shopping?
No, we can go, yes.
Yeah, attend whichever. Because after that, we'll do just some nuts and bolts stuff and, like, committee responsibilities, yeah. So I think that'll be like an hour.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. And then just some action items that we need to vote on. The vote to approve warrants and payroll.
I move to approve the warrants and payroll. Second.
Kat was second. And then do we do a roll call for that?
I think you have to.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Oh, opposed? Sorry, you guys. Okay, I'm writing that down. All right, I will not do that again. Okay, so vote to approve regular session minutes.
To approve the regular session minutes in May 7th, 2025.
Okay, you, who's second? Carrie, Carrie. Thank you, Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So may I just add something, though, with those notes? Those, Jess Mormon does a fantastic job writing up those minutes. Really, kudos to her. That's a lot of hard work. So thank you, Jess, for doing that.
She'll hear you say that, because she knows.
Oh, my goodness, that's right. Okay.
And maybe in the next sentence.
And you have to write that on, and Donnell feels that thank you very much, because it's just, I'm just so amazed.
And she and I worked out a system. She's going to sign it to me the 15th of the month, so that we'll just load them right in, and they'll be ready to go. You won't even have to think about that.
Thank you, thank you. That's amazing news. Okay, so vote to, or we already did that, vote to approve policy, we already did that one.
G. So G, I can explain G if you'd like.
Okay, please.
So it's a strange little clause in my contract, but basically I have a set amount of vacation days. If I don't take that many vacation days, I can ask to kind of sell them back. So instead, I get a per diem for it. Usually, we just do that, you know, for our administrators, and they send a Google form to Jordan. But for me specifically, it's in my contract, I need to ask you to vote for it. So I'm officially requesting to sell back 10 vacation days. And so I hope that you approve that.
That's a roll call, right?
I don't know. Probably.
Okay.
I think financials are a roll call. I can look it up for you.
Okay. You'll make a motion?
Motion to vote to accept the superintendent request sellback for 10 days.
Second? Second. Okay.
Yes.
Carrie, yes. Donnell, yes?
Yes.
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 I don't vote on budget.
Oh, no. You made a joke. Calling me out. I don't know if I like that.
That was good.
That was very good. Oh, my goodness. Okay, really good. So anyone opposed?
No. Thank you.
Motion passes.
The motion passes.
Unanimously.
Unanimously.
He's just making it harder.
Yeah, I know. You guys keep feeding me.
It's because you're doing so well.
Oh, goodness.
It's the teacher in us.
Oh, that's so good. I really need it. So vote to release previous executive session minutes as rendered appropriate by legal counsel.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Yes.
Donnell, yes?
Yes.
Ken Don?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously, right? Yes, it did. It did. Good.
Kids are saying you're cooking.
All righty, I know. Goodness. Now we'll have the summer off, and I'll, I think we need some summer meetings, so we can practice. Okay, future agenda items. Welcome and onboarding new members. We already said welcome. But you guys, we are so grateful for you, really, really. Thank you so much. And we're so excited to have you on our team. Thank you. I know. This is such a great, and my little friend down there, Zoe, so excited to have you, Zoe. And then the summer workshop, we talked about, July 2nd at 9:00.
So when we adjourn, we need to go, a vote to go into executive session without the intent of returning to regular session.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn this meeting, okay? And then we're going to go into executive session with the intent not to go back to, right, the regular meeting.
Right.
Okay?
So you'll need a motion for that, and read the reason why, which is here on the agenda.
Oh, right here, state the purpose of the executive session. Okay. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
So moved.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Kat, thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Unanimous, again.
So we'll adjourn this meeting.
Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and then go into executive session.
Meeting adjourned. Yeah, and we'll, I'll set up in the room over there.